Things will now come to order. Roll call.
Councilor Rowsey?
Here.
Councilor Coivinen?
Here.
Councilor Purpich?
Here.
Councilor Lilis?
Here.
Mayor Visolevich?
Here. Approval of minutes, City Council workshop, June 26th. Approval of minutes, City Council meeting, July 2nd. Approval of minutes, City Council meeting, July 16th. So, most we have is support.
Support.
Motion made by Coivinen, support by Purpich. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item D, approval of tonight's agenda. Anybody have any additions or changes? If not, I'll call for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So.
Motion made by Rowsey, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Lilis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Appointments and presentations. We have a presentation and a donation from Betsy Gorski and Shelley Rask. Are they present?
No.
It's a don-
There he is, the mayor.
If you would like.
I'll let you read it.
Nothing about the good glasses. Mayor Robert Visolevich and City Council members. Dear mayor and council members, we, the past president and current treasurer of the Evlith Women's Golf League, are here to give the city of Evlith with a check in the amount of $3,943. In June of this season, the Evlith Women's Golf League held a Diane Dwight Memorial Golf Invitational with a double intent. First, we wanted to honor our dear friend and our fellow league member who died on the Evlith golf course during league play on August 23rd, 2023. While there is an AED located in the clubhouse, it was not accessible fast enough to benefit Diane, which brings us to our second intent, that with the hosting of the golf invitational tournament, it was to raise funds towards the purchase of a second AED to be placed out in the middle of the golf course by the fourth and fifth holes. We had tremendous support from the community at large, family members and friends of Diane, and of course, all the women golfers that came and participated. Please accept this donation, money to be used towards the purchase of an AED, and hopefully together we can prevent another situation like Diane's from happening. I'll tell you what, that was really a touching situation to happen out there like that.
It was.
There's too much of the hard stuff, you know, you hear.
Yeah.
Boy, that was really great of you to come up with that because I'm sure it will provide the training that the staff needs out there.
Well, we have a couple. One of our golf members is the third commander, Diane Teague or something, and she said that starting next year she'll give us all the training.
Oh, that's perfect.
So, that's our goal, you know, to be aware of how to use it.
Well, you know, you get hot summers, weather like this, you know, it's a necessary thing, but they can't express, you know, the thanks from us and the whole community for doing something like this because I think it's going to have a lot of benefits going forward.
We're not sure how much they are up there. We could get the ball rolling with this.
So, I don't know, John, you might know a little bit about cost if you look like that.
I know that the AEDs and I'm going to assume that it's going to be similar or the same kind that are, that's out there already and stuff. And they're not overly expensive. I'm more concerned with the city will be responsible, I hope, to build something there that it can be housed in, that's protected from the elements and stuff.
But there's a shed out there. Here's like a little shed.
Understood. It has to meet-
And I live in this power.
It has to meet certain requirements so it doesn't get, you know, impinged on.
Meanwhile, are you accepting anyone who's-
You got the, you have the floor.
Well, as I'm sure you're just a grand lady, you're, you know.
This is- Well, I'd like to call for a motion that we accept this gift and send a letter of thanks to the Evlith Ladies Golf League.
So move.
Do we have a support?
Support.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think we could probably put, when we do get a place for that, in memory of-
A nice plaque would be excellent. I think that's appropriate.
Because, you know, that tragedy precipitated, you know, our awareness and the golfer's awareness really out there. Well, we move on to the consent agenda. Approval of payroll, July 1st through the 15th, and approval of claims, July 2024. Anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? If not, I'll call for a motion that we approve these two items.
So move.
Motion made by Rowsey, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We have no public hearings, no unfinished business. We'll move on to new business. Item one, we're scheduled November 5th, 2024, council meeting due to general election. Fifth. I don't know, when do we, the seventh, too early? Because there's a lot of follow-up after.
Yeah, so the, um-
You want to go to following week?
That would be great if we could go maybe on the 12th at our usual time.
Okay.
Will we stay here then, the next one? We'll go second and fourth Tuesdays?
We could, John.
Because, you know, one week we may not have no business.
Or we might have workshops.
That too?
That, yeah.
My favorite.
Yeah.
So a second weekend, second weekend.
Yeah, it'd be the 12th.
12th.
Yeah. Call for a motion that we reschedule the first November council meeting to the 12th at 2:00 PM.
So move.
Motion made by Lilis, do we have a support?
Support.
Joe?
Joe.
Support by Coivinen, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number two, consider bids for AMI metering project. Jerry, you got anything to add there?
Yeah, no, we've been working on this for a long time. I'm glad to see it actually coming and into where we can get them installed. But we had six bids back. We did interviews on four of them, and the committee recommends going with Dakota Supply. They were the cheapest bidder also.
It's unbelievable what this technology has gotten to. There's a number of communities around here already have this.
Yeah, people won't have to read their meters anymore. Everything will come directly to our station here. We can tell temperature. We can tell possibly if there's a water leak somewhere or running water. They're smart meters is what they are.
Do we keep that feature with Dakota Supply where they can go online and check their status also?
Yes, yep.
So if they got some water running down south for the winter, then you'll know right away.
If we get that, if we purchase that part of it, we don't have that in this bid. For the homeowner kitchen.
Anybody have any questions, Jerry and Ellen? If not, I'll call for a motion that we take bid from Dakota Supply,
So move.
Motion made by Purpich, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Rowsey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item three, pay application from number eight from Max Gray Construction in the amount of $309,500.71 for City of Evlith projects. If no one has any questions, I'll call for a motion that we approve this pay request.
I'd like to know where, how far along we are and what's the schedule.
So I'm going to jump ahead to the next pay request because that brings us down to a final amount owed at the next one, $182,000. So we're making really good progress. We're waiting for some components to still come in, even though I think we're on a long time ago. But finishing up with the library, the library step project is not within this bid, but as you know, they worked on. The air conditioning is up and running in the fire hall. We have air conditioning lights going on here because we're waiting for some parts to come in. But for near the end.
Are you the construction manager or the? No, I just want to know who's the contact that you are?
I am, and I work for Jerry.
Did we get a motion and a support for this?
No.
Nothing yet.
Okay. Anybody want to pay Max Gray?
So move.
Motion made by Lilis, we got a support.
All support.
Support by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item four, pay application number nine for Max Gray Construction in total amount of $74,243.95. Any question on that pay request? If not, call for a motion that we pay application nine.
So move.
Motion made by Coivinen, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Rowsey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number five, quotes for auditorium stage curtains and audiovisual system. Is that the final hurdle we've got up there, Jack?
It's the final hurdle on the main floor.
Yeah.
Wow. It's made of gold?
I'm sorry, what?
Is it made of gold?
Yes.
Oh, God.
Yeah, I'll tell you that. Well, it's for the use that place gets, you know.
We had a 50th anniversary reunion there on the 6th, uh, 6th, and it was quite a facility, handled everything quite well, and it was well done. Which is a beautiful event. It's well worth everything you put into it. So I'm quite pleased with how it came out.
Is there a motion to accept that vote? Because we do need an audiovisual system up there.
So move.
Motion made by Rowsey, we have a support.
I'll support it.
Support by Coivinen, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item six, pay request number one, 3D concrete construction in the amount of $32,160 for curb and sidewalk improvements.
Jerry, is this the, uh, this is what we decided we were going to do this summer? Is this the end of it or do we have still more going on here?
Yeah, we still have the $15,000 from the county to do. We haven't done anything on a cassow route yet. This takes care of the city portion. The $30,000 there, you let me do the sidewalks and curbs.
Come up my street.
We'll take a look.
There's a hole there for two years now, sidewalk, as it seems, so. I'm just saying, you know.
I think that was that gentleman that put the water line in? And didn't put a sidewalk back?
There's no sidewalk there.
Okay. Oh, okay. We'll check it out.
Anybody have any more questions on pay request one from 3D? If not, I'll call for a motion that we pay these guys.
So move.
Motion made by Purpich, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Lilis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number seven, change order number one from Masabi Batuminus in the amount of $8,019 for fail pond trail improvements, phase two. I think I'm going to take seven and eight together toward the same project. If no one has an objection. Eight is from Masabi Batuminus for fail pond trail improvement, Take seven and eight under one motion. Took them forever with all this rain.
Yeah, are we done?
Yeah, it looks like to me, looks done.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah, the 8,000 change order, I got called down there and they were doing the digging, pulling out everything, and there was a section of the trail that had to be dug out. It was waterlogged, it was like quicksand down there. So I okayed that. That grant that we got will cover half of that. So it didn't go over our original thoughts, but it went over our original budget on it. Not budget, but it went over our bid on it, so.
Well, I'm surprised with all this water we had, rain going back and redoing things.
Yeah, and to get it done right, we had, we had to okay that at the moment.
We let things done right.
And it did come nice.
Anybody else have any questions? Not, off the motion, we approve items seven and eight.
So move.
Motion made by Rowsey, we got a support.
All support.
Support by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Pay request number six from St. Louis County in amount of $24,794.19 for Roosevelt Douglas utility improvements. Think this could have gotten any smaller, this writing?
I'm sorry.
Jerry, those are county state aid streets, aren't they?
Correct, yeah. Those are cassow roads. So we paid for the utilities. The county paid for the street reconstruction.
Okay. Do we have a motion that we approve pay request number six for St. Louis County?
So move.
Motion made by Purpich, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Lilis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Pay request number eight, final from St. Louis County in amount of $5,418.90 and $3,604.52 for 22 Roosevelt Douglas utility improvements.
Everything's done?
It's all done, yep. They corrected a few issues that we had on Douglas and everything looks good again.
Any further questions? Not, call for a motion that we approve these pay requests.
So move.
Motion made by Coivinen, we got a support. Support, support by Rowsey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Proposal for Witset for Grant Avenue, Pier Street Arch removal renovation or replacement.
Mayor, you guys asked me to go out and look at either renovating it, tearing it down, or building new because it is falling apart. So I'm bringing you these three estimates of what it costs for each. And they are estimates.
Yeah.
If we decided to take it down, would we take it down ourselves?
No, that's the cost to remove it by a contractor coming in. There's electrical and everything else.
A lot of electrical.
There's some steel beams in there, it'd be pretty tough. I mean, we could do it, but, you know, we're kind of close to some other buildings.
Oh, yeah, I know, that is close.
I'd rather have it professionally done.
If we were to remove it, do we have an alternative? Or what would we do to replace that space?
They would just add the sidewalk to it, you know. It's got that little brick now. It'd probably be filled in with the brick if we were to remove it.
Well, we need a little more time to look at this, you know, get some input.
I think you're right. I think we need to give it a little bit more thought and hear what folks are thinking about it because we also have some electrical concerns too.
Is the arch safe right now? Is it safe, structurally safe?
Structurally, probably. The outside, the panels or tiles are falling off.
Yeah, I don't want nobody to get-
So if somebody actually walks under there, yeah, it could, one could fall off. They're loose, you know, there's a lot of loose concrete.
I don't know. I'd say that we table it till the next meeting, but at that meeting, we should decide and get that hazard fixed.
And we can also tape around it just so nobody walks under it.
Whatever it takes to make it safe.
If that's what you want us to do.
Let's try and get some kind of fencing or something around it to-
Yeah, we could put some red fence around it.
Just don't want to go down there and somebody's got a knock on your head.
Call for a motion that we table item 11.
So move.
Motion made by Lilis, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Resolution authorized the city of Evlith to make application to and accept funds to the Minnesota Department of Iron Range Resources and Rehabilitation Public Works Program for utilities for new housing at 401 Roosevelt Avenue. And that is the junior high property?
Correct.
I'll support that motion, it's a no-brainer.
Okay, motion made by Rowsey, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Purpich. I would also like to think maybe we could pre-sell them lots and survey and get them on the market because if somebody's going to build there when the contractor is putting utilities in, they'll probably save some money by having utilities run where they're building. And I don't think anybody's going to do anything this year on that. Get the lots sold, they're available, and everybody knows what's going on, where the utilities are coming from. But that's just my thought there.
We have those designed, do we not, Alan?
Um, not at this point. We just have a conceptual plan and a budgetary cost estimate to put the utilities in there.
And did we ever decide on alley, no alley? We never did really make any type of decision.
I don't believe a decision has been made.
I don't think so either.
I don't think you guys were looking at doing it earlier.
I think we talked about it, but I don't think that we decided on either or, so. Well, we had that water connection issue or-
Yeah, coming up Jones.
Yeah, digging up Jones Street. The alley would have alleviated that. But I would imagine maybe we should schedule that for a discussion. Put it on your agenda for next meeting or whatever you do.
Yeah, because they like to me plot them out and list them anyway, you know, because they're nice locks, they're good size.
The sooner we can get it out to the public that they're for sale, the sooner we can move forward.
When people can make some plans too, whether it's like over the winter months and I can see when they put the utilities in, they probably save a few bucks from the contractors there. I'll call for a motion that we approve item 12.
John?
Okay. Any support? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Resolution authorizing the city of Evlith to make application to and accept funds from the Minnesota Department of Iron Range Resources and Rehabilitation Public Works Programs for building improvements to a new city building at 801 Jones Street. And that is the gym building?
We're correct.
And that is definitely a city building though?
Not yet.
Yeah.
The agreements have been signed in the school district, and per the agreements, we'll take, when we get safe access to them and they complete their demolition, then we'll sign the lease and we will own it after we complete the sale. But in the meantime-
Purchase agreement and everything's been worked on and everything.
It's all done. In the meantime, Witset is working on the plans for the business.
Yeah. Soon as they get that, then we can bid that out.
Correct.
So I would think, well, with the calendar rolling on, it's a lot later than we think at the moment here. I'm wondering if we're going to be able to make the cutoff before we get into the cold weather to get either heat in there or get that system drained off.
So I believe we spoke previously about the, if I do, RB, will you make a grant on your behalf? They likely won't meet until December. So we're getting a price from one of the contractors working here to winterize the building.
Yeah, if it comes down to that, it's probably it's-
Yeah, cool.
There's been some interest in that building. I've had four business inquiries, one from town and three from out of town. Would really like to go through the building and look at it. Their existing businesses would like to go there. So there's some definite interest in tenants there. Any further discussion? Do we get a motion and a support on that?
Not yet.
Okay. Somebody going to support this item 13?
So move.
Motion made by Coivinen, we got a support.
Support.
Support by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item 14, request from North St. Louis County Habitat for Humanity for reduced camping fees at the Veterans Park.
Don't we do that every year?
We did it last year.
Jerry?
Yeah, we did it in '22. They didn't stay at the camp on last year, but, you know, we've done it over the years and we give them anywhere from 25% to 40% break on fees. So our camping, weekly camping rate right now is $200. So it'd be 120 if you gave them 40% off, and it'd be 150 if you gave them 25% off or nothing. They're building in Virginia this year in Beale.
Any idea of how many, uh, six campsites?
Six for those weeks. Yeah, August and September, they want some.
They want six?
And they already have them reserved. They're reserved already. They have six sites reserved. Both of those, August 12th through the 23rd, September 9th through the 20th. They're just asking for a reduction in rates.
And they stay there and that's where they go to work from or?
Correct.
Okay. So it's sort of like an economic boom too because they can stop in town. I didn't make that motion.
Okay. Do we have a support?
At what percent?
40%, is that what we gave them last time?
That's, I believe you gave a 40% on it.
Okay. Do we have support to that motion?
Support.
Support by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Number 15, resolution accepting donation for the library. David and Vivian have donated to the library, and I would like the motion to accept that donation and send them a letter of thanks for that from the city of Evlith.
So move. Support.
Motion made, did you make it, Brian?
Yes.
Motion made by Lilis, support by Coivinen. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You know, the library, it's a pretty good amount of donations there. Says a lot. I know there's a lot of use for that facility. Did you start to work on those front steps?
They're done.
They're done?
Probably waiting for the railings.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I went by there today and there was a group of young kids out there and they were reading to them. That was really nice. And yesterday, there was a lady out there painting a portrait.
Oh, because we didn't-
It was really kind of neat because we didn't have to do a major like we thought, take them totally out of there.
And they look good. Yeah, they do look good. I went up and looked at it.
Yeah, they do look good.
Item number 16. Fall 2024 Refuge Collection and Yard Waste Schedule. Here we go, fall already.
This looks like a holiday.
The days are long, Bobby, but the years are really short.
Boy, you can see that again. Well, this doesn't look much different. What are the hours going to be down there, Jerry?
There's seven o'clock till six o'clock for those two weeks.
And no weekends?
No weekends.
Okay. Anybody have any question on the schedule? If not, I'll call for a motion that we approve the fall 2024 schedule.
So moved.
Motion made by Rousey, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Anybody got any council presentation or reports?
We don't have EDA till the 22nd. Like remember short term. Um, we didn't have HRA.
Correct.
So I don't have any committee reports to make.
Bob, we uh, I got a, a call from, or I talked to a citizen that lives up in the Lincoln. We talked about the uh, the two parking spots that weren't available underneath the garage. Well, they're being used by our, the contractor to remove snow and all that stuff. Uh, you know, some people got caught out in the rain where they couldn't get in and there's no parking spot for them. I don't know how many parking spots each apartment is allowed, but it seems to me that uh.
Everybody should have at least one.
Should have at least one and not have to park outside.
Well, there were some agreements made, I guess, in the past or some got two. And then I know at one point, if there was an empty spot, they'd rent until tenant came with a car. Then you'd have to, you know, put the second vehicle outside. But anybody who lives in a place like that should have one parking spot.
Jackie, isn't that contractual in their contract when they have one parking spot is in the contract?
Correct. And I have reminded the management company that they've only announced it for you guys at the next meeting regarding how, you know, how long those current agreements for the subsequent spots.
Those people that know that's.
Correct, correct. Yep. And then hopefully at the next meeting, I'm not visiting, but even talking here. But I should have some quotes for you for your outside storage. The purpose we got to store is to remove all of the stuff in the two spots.
Yeah.
And also get some storage for the um, hanger fridge. That's outside and possibly room in the storage to store next to.
Are you looking like an odd sized storage?
Yes.
Like maybe one of those buildings like they got by Zee Park, you know, you buy them already put up.
They call them pole building.
Well, they look great.
Well, but it's just a fancy pole building.
But they can fix them up so they can kind of blend.
Oh yeah, you have to make it aesthetic, you know, you want it to look nice.
They're ready to go and they're on four by four, so you can move them.
I don't want to have, uh, someone that lives in the old apartments get caught in a torrential rain like we've had or in a snowstorm or something like that. There should not be anything like that for, at least they should have at least one stall available.
I don't know why it must have been like that for more than 20 years.
Yeah, well, let's, let's see if we can clean it up.
With the improvements, a lot of those problems should be eliminated. All the water drainage and stuff like that, that was screwing things up for people and. Yeah.
Well, you go grocery store shopping, it's 20 below here inside, you can take your time, it's not slippery. And that's the idea of moving there, to have that convenience.
That's all I got.
Okay. Chief, you've got anything?
Nothing today, sir.
Jerry?
Nothing else, Mayor, thank you.
Alan?
No, not from here, thank you.
Right. Steph, you got anything?
I don't have anything.
Jackie?
No, but I think we'll have our regular second one of office to cover these things.
Oh, okay. Joel, you got anything to add?
Oh, where do I even get started, man? Uh, no, I don't.
John, you got anything?
I don't know if I really want to bring it all up now. I think we should get down to the business at hand once coming. I'm gonna let it pass and kind of wait till the next meeting.
Brian?
I have nothing further, thank you.
Jim?
No.
Joel?
Yeah, we'll have a golf commission meeting in the near future. We have to all get together for everybody's time and then we'll let you know. How many balls are lost out there? But I'll keep you posted.
Put that AED shit on the agenda.
How do you spell it?
AED.
Yes, yes.
You know, you don't think about that stuff till tragedy happens, you know what happens. And you're a long ways away from.
And there's a lot of people golfing out there.
Yeah. Yeah, you just don't think about how far they are away.
There's a lot of us 60 something, young people.
There'll be a big tournament this weekend too.
Yep.
Hockey Hall of Fame. So that's always a big draw for.
There'll be a lot of people out there.
Yeah.
That's this weekend, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's the fundraiser.
Starts Friday.
Yep. Anybody have anything on the council agenda this afternoon's agenda? Any questions?
I'll go to Steve Manor, please.
Okay, you got five minutes.
Hear me? Hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. If those who don't know me, I'm Ryan Zanacar, been in this town 48 years. Been in business, don't have body shop, my wife and I, for 20 years. I've been also involved in managing and operating at Evol Virginia Municipal Airport for two and a half years as manager and operator. We're here today because quite a few people in town have concerns. One is we have five elected officials in the city of Evol that are either elected or are voted in by the taxpayers or the residents that are um, here, okay? They're supposed to make the decision, the five in the city. That's how the governing body works for the city, okay? Uh, I've been involved out at the airport, there's a board out there that was established with both city of Evol and city of Virginia people on the board. I believe they're supposed to make the decisions from there too.
Is this strictly about the airport?
No.
This part, cause that should be addressed to the airport authority, not to us because.
No, so the first thing I have is the land at 408 Fair Road. I hit a roadblock every single time trying to get forward with this project. A preliminary agreement, a preliminary that holds the city not responsible, nor myself responsible at all. And from day one when I met with you guys, all I asked was a contract to be drawn up that you tell me when it'll be cleaned up and when the title will be cleared. And I'll tell you, or I said then within one year, the building will be built. We're at square one, three years later.
Let me fill in the gaps before you start complaining. Two and a half years ago, we had a development agreement because we could get money from deed and the IRRB to clean that site up for 150 grand. And why should we spend the city's money when we can get it somewhere else? But you have not completed or signed the draft preliminary agreement and I don't know what's going on. You didn't finish your part and now you're pointing the finger at everybody else and bad mouthing us?
No, listen man, let me talk for my five minutes.
Yeah.
Then you can address it, please. Okay? You guys were involved in funding for that thing over eight years ago with the previous developer or whatever you guys had under contract. It never got cleaned. Why am I involved? Because I show interest in it. I do not own the property. You're responsible for cleaning it and everything regardless who's going in there. Why am I getting myself tied up? So you can get funding to clean it up. Okay?
Okay, that's my answer is why?
Okay.
Why should we spend the taxpayers' money in town when we can get it somewhere else?
But here's the deal, I've been in workshop meetings with you guys.
Yep.
I leave there and I'm like, oh, we're going in the right direction. Soon as I get out of that workshop meeting, mysteriously your administrator isn't there. That's how much care it is for a new business.
Don't start bad mouthing people here. This is an information meeting. No, you wait.
I told you, five minutes, please.
Well, this will determine in five minutes, but they state the facts, no name calling of anybody.
I didn't say anything, okay? The phone rings, soon as the meeting's done, it's the administrator. You know, Ryan, that's not the way we can do it. Now, I just had five members tell me the way it was going to be done and it was going to get taken care of. Who is running the city is my question. And who is running our airport? Your airport just had a devastation in the last month out there. Under one sole person is why it happened. And one sole person is why I'm not going next door to head body shop. I don't know what direction our town's going. I've tried, I've been in Evol for my whole life, but I am sick and tired of being sick and tired of it. Okay? So either figure it out and get our town going in the right direction. On your guys' website, it says Gateway to the Iron Range. I'm sad to say, a citizen for 48 years in this town, you know what that gateway is to the IRH? Get through the town as quick as possible because the others are developing on the IRH, okay? Thank you for your time.
Well, I'll tell you what, you, you made a good speech, Brian, but two and a half years, and how many times did I go down to body shop? And explain that to you? Yeah, yeah, I know what I gotta do. Do you want us to go get your application? Everyone we gave you, your part, the financial information, everything, nothing's filled out.
Do you want to develop or land it out? I told you from day one.
We want to develop it.
How can we develop it? How can we develop it when, if we don't have the money to do it? We need, we need a business to go in there. We wanted you to go in there. We absolutely wanted you. You provided no business plan. It was all written, it was all handwritten. We asked you to, if you had in the cone, if you had a lawyer or if you had something to draw something up so that we could have a business plan. We're not, we don't, we don't care how much money you make in your body shop, how much money you have anywhere. But the fact of the matter is, the city needed help cleaning that up. And with the, with the, with the funds that are available through the feds and the state, with your help, we could have gotten grants to clean that up and it would have been done a year and a half ago, if that would have been the case.
Ninety percent of the cost, we could have got grants.
I totally get that. But eight years ago, it was Clark Blackwood's in there. It was going to get cleaned up then. He was in there for how many years? It never got cleaned up.
Yeah, it got defaulted. And how many years?
How many years was he in there that you guys never fought through on your cleanup then? Come on, you got it for $1 because you guys wanted to clean it up. You guys are the ones that sucked your neck out for a dollar to clean it up.
Don't you think that's a responsible use of taxpayers' money? Why take it out of our pocket?
After eight and a half years, it's sitting there.
Well, why did it take you, why did it take you two and a half years? You still haven't signed the application or put down a financial. No one else has had a problem. We did a couple other businesses.
Can you tell me about a preliminary agreement?
Yes, so we can get the grant money.
Okay, but it doesn't hold me accountable for nothing and you, you either. And the dealings I've had in the last three years I've seen.
You know what, you, you understand what a preliminary agreement is? So we can get the ball rolling and get the specifics. Why don't you tell everybody how many times I went down and told you, cause we're related. I went way beyond what I was doing to explain that to you.
Well, I think that's your problem why you're related. Why I don't hate this stuff.
Oh yeah, you're.
You know.
Why don't you, you're done talking.
I don't know, what do you want me to do?
You're done. Anybody else? Yes, Ken.
That's a joke.
Yeah, you're a joke.
I just want to say, my name is Kami Moon and I don't need to order the COVID medal. I just want to say I have lived through all my life, including my parents, my grandparents, everybody else who were very proud, as I was, to live in this town. To me, we need to bring our town back because right now, it's very hurtful to see no one coming through here. Businesses faltering and no one's helping us. And as a community, I think all of us here agree with me. And anybody that probably lives in this town is if we work together, we can make this town good again. We need to move forward to, we've lost so much. We need to make things better. And I think we need grocery stores. Um, if I could build that school, if I went the freaking lot, I'd build a brand new school and none of you would be alone in it maybe. But however, we need to bring this town back to where it used to be, where everybody was happy, people got along. Everybody enjoyed things. You felt safe. I don't even feel safe anymore in this community. Live on my street, which some of you do. Listen at 3, 4 in the morning, motorcycles, bike, or the back and the other. Something needs to move forward. And I think as a community, as a council, as a mayor, as business people, we need to move forward and make this town a place where people want to come to, who, who really still have faith. Who still, you know, I never thought I'd say I don't want to live here. But sometimes I say that. I never thought my dad would ever say that. But all I want to say is I hope I live long enough to see it get better here. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
A gripe session doesn't solve. We need a meeting like that at the auditorium. People write down their questions, what their concerns. Because there's no dumb ideas.
I agree.
And then you put it on a table. We got a map of the city there. Then you can visually see.
You don't realize it, I'll help you.
Yeah, that's what we need. A meeting up there where everybody can talk casually, write down everything so you don't forget. Cause I don't know what you, what you see and I see are two different things or any of us. And then you list the things.
I don't think you would have the same vision for your town.
Cause there's a lot of things going on.
I don't think you would have the same one. You would want your town to be still.
Things happen for reasons that's out of our control, people don't realize. Like the schools. They said there wasn't enough room up there for a new grade school. If you can believe that one, look where they got a new grade school north of us, smaller spot. I mean, there's so many different things.
I have also a neighbor who signed that too. It wasn't me.
But that's, that's what you need. People wanted to vote the time to a meeting with ideas and you got a map of the town, a nice casual setting where people can talk. And then we know what's a concern, why it is, maybe somebody's got an answer or an option. You know, two heads are better.
You know, Mayor, I, I think we should plan something that up there. And then also let everybody know, like, you know, EJ and, and Michelle with the new stuff coming with the highway out there so we can show them what's coming so they don't have to hear it from somebody that has no idea what they're talking about. I mean, that, that's a lot of it. Somebody will say something and then it just runs, you know? I used to say that at the bar years ago, where you say particularly nice weather, but by the time it gets to the other end, it's tickle your ass with a feather. You know, I, I mean, at least this way you'll see everything, hear everything and know it. We could have one once every two months or once a month, whatever. I don't care.
There's going to be a mess out here next year when they redo that corridor. I'll tell you that. From the bridges all the way to Lundgrids. Traffic bottled up going through, it's going to be kind of a mess. And that held up a lot of projects. Wait till that's done. And once that's done. But you gotta have an open forum where people got ideas and can speak.
Do it.
And bring it. We can schedule one anytime.
Do it. Schedule it right now.
The city, the city cannot build a grocery store or a convenience store. You have to have, you have to have people with ideas to come forward and say, this is, you know, this is what we want.
You know.
We, we need.
That's what I said. Do it. Put it right there. Put it on your calendar. Say we'll be on, on this day, we'll have a meeting to put our heads together to figure out what we can do.
How's August 22nd? Does that work?
Wait, I think I have a.
What time? What time should we have? Evening? Five o'clock, something like that?
Working people, so I think maybe.
Is five early enough? Too early?
Six o'clock?
Six.
I think you need to, I think you need to move forward with a, with a progressive plan.
I think, you know, you, you do, cause then you've got all the ideas together and everybody can kind of look at them and there might be solutions. Somebody at, in the room might have a solution for somebody's concern, you know? You put your heads together on that.
So do it.
Yeah, we can do that. Get a map of the city so you can visualize what you're talking about. Because like the grocery stores, small businesses, some of you guys can speak, COVID really hurt. Then when the fuel prices went way up, you know, cost of operating, like a grocery store got a slim margin profit. And that's what hurts them, especially when they're carrying a lot of debt.
I'm as tired as the next person driving 12 miles to get a can of peas, but they're back. It is, it is, it's, it's not the way.
We can make this town better.
Absolutely.
Who would want to come here to live if you gotta go to Virginia for everything?
You should stack buildings or ours building a stack building.
So Stephanie just pointed out that she believes that auditory might be rented on the 22nd.
What?
For somebody planning for a wedding. So.
What do we got? 23rd?
Yes.
And what's our next closest date that it's over? Okay.
Well, we'll figure something about that or the next week if that's.
We have to put a notice in the paper.
Yeah, how many people get a paper? You know how that is.
I get a paper and I don't get a paper.
You can put it in a lot of buildings, everybody gets one of them.
Yeah, not this week.
But yeah, but write some ideas and concerns down. Then everybody can compare notes and find out if there's a solution, if there's not, because sometimes there's a roundabout way to do things, you know what's going on. The whole key to everything is spending somebody else's money. Yes.
Just curious how you're, I've got a date. It would be nice to have a date today. Because I would love to have them, the date in line.
Okay, that's. What do you guys think of it?
I think if you have anything midweek, there shouldn't be a conflict with weddings or for parties or whatever.
How about the 27th? That sounds like a date and usually there's no activities that day.
It's a Tuesday.
That's at 6:00 PM?
Yeah, we can have it at 6:00.
Let's do that.
27th at 6 o'clock.
Yeah, that way there's plenty of room, plenty of seating, you know, and.
Great. And will the city publish that? I mean, some people do, yeah.
We will. I buy one every day because you want to look at who's dead, you know what I mean?
Well, we'll put something in the paper.
Thank you. I'm sure you have money from this meeting.
The only way you're going to fix the problem is if everybody gets involved. You know what I mean? It's.
We all know where the problem lies.
Yeah, well, there you go. There's a problem with griping right off the bat. If you got a negative attitude, stay home. If you got a positive attitude, bring some good ideas.
Three years possible. Now I'm negative because of how things are operating with one person in charge.